Weird.
Were we, did, did we look at it during the WIS study?
Yes, we did. And I, um, at the time, there was a different person in there. I don't believe they were doing as many of the events or duties that is currently, because Mr. Miller has stated that he is doing things that's not even reflected in the job description.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I believe we are working with Mr. Miller to update that.
As you go through the PAC process.
So the next series of positions are all at YSB. They're at 40 hours. Um, you could make these positions non-exempt. There's some concern about that because they frequently cover when YSB has vacancies and looks so like that residential specialist positions, um, rather frequently vacant and other positions cover it. So they might occur a lot of non-exempt hours, but I haven't really looked at that on it yet. Um, at the risk of Michelle throwing something at me, you could create a YSB specific grid. Um, that somewhat makes sense because YSB is unique in the sense that it's a 24/7 facility. And the only other 24/7 facility that we do have is the jail and it has its own grid. Um, and having its own grid might cure some issues that are unique to YSB.
They've come to PAC quite a bit.
Uh, they do. Um, you, I to an SO, but this is where I will say, some of the problems on this list, a majority of the problems on this list that are positions of a PATC at 40 hours, um, salaries would meet the FLSA minimum with the 4% COLA. So if you did a 4% COLA across the grid, rest of these problems go away mainly.
Well, that's not true. Not all of them.
Not all of them, but it leaves two.
Two?
Believe the director and the internal auditor.
That is just.
It's just one possibility.
Just an awfully expensive cure for relatively small.
Right. Then this is, yeah, a solution. Try to find a problem.
It was a real problem, but I'm, yeah, it's, it's a very expensive cure when a less expensive cure is.
I mean, with the states saying 3%, we're gonna say 4% because we've got some people we don't know what to do with, whatever.
So I have a question.
Yes, go for it, Katie. We're informal at this point.
Okay. It seemed that way, but then I realized, I don't know.
I, I started by interrupting.
Um, according to the memo part right before that, um, chart, which thank you for the table. That lays things out really clearly. So first of all, thank you. That, that helps immensely. You highlighted the 4% COLA solution and that the PATC positions at 40 hours would meet that. And.
So that's all of YSB, the public defender. It'll leave the director position and veterans. All of your probation officer positions are going to be remedied by adding that, um, to their job description.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with the whole, that's an expensive solution.
Yeah. I just threw it out as one solution and slew of others offered.
Mm-hmm. Oh, clearly. I get it. Yeah.
The deadline is January 1st of 2025 to resolve these issues. Does resolution include PAC is working on it? Or does resolution?
January 1st, the salaries have to be at the FLSA minimum if they are exempt employees.
Yeah.
We have, so if we're gonna go down like the PAC route where we're reevaluating job descriptions, we have three more meetings.
Correct.
We would have to work very expeditiously.
Be like the probation change won't need to go to WIS. Counsel can do that. Um, have to, if, if, um, you move the health department to 40 hours, that wouldn't require WIS action. So I mean, I guess it depends on how much, which path you take on each position as to how quickly it can be remedied. WIS path will take longer.
So you're saying that we need to have this be part of our adopted salary ordinance?
Yes, yes.
Ready to be paid on January 1st?
Yep. Yes.
This is in the mix of all those things. Yeah. And Counselor McKim?
So the, the exempt versus non-exempt, refresh my memory, is that something, that's something the council can just do?
You can move an exempt employee to non-exempt because it's conferring a benefit. You cannot move a non-exempt employee to exempt because it's the removal of the benefit.
Okay. So, but those first two positions, they could just do that.
And we, but to clarify, without WIS, like we can just magically say, is what you're, I just want to make sure because I think that was your point too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would have to defer to Michelle if that would be, uh, something that would get sent to WIS.
I, anytime we make any changes to WIS, you know, to the job descriptions, I send it to them. So.
But you don't have to.
But no, just as an FYI, not for, you know, so that way they have it on the record.
But I sent to, I meant pay them to look at it and weigh in or it wouldn't be a request for review. It would be more of a for their knowledge.
Yes.
Got it.
I, oh, go ahead. Do we pay them to receive a change? Okay. I don't care at all. You said, right, charges.
But I do want to remind everybody, the sending it to them is a key component of what Margie Rice sort of said back when we went through that because they went in and looked and they had like 1986 this, 1992 this, and, and the name Monroe wrong. So it's.
Anytime, and I say we, the council updates, approves job descriptions, and then there's changes made. I forward it back to WIS for their database to have on file so they know what we've done. So.
Yeah. Go ahead, Counselor McKim, I think it was.
And that's really good, but we're also supposed to be keeping track of it just in case, you know, WIS goes.
Yep, we did.
Wherever.
We're doing that here.
Because not that long ago, nobody could find the job descriptions. It's like, oh, we've lost them. So we can't ever let that happen.
So it seems to me that, that, oh, it just disappeared.
I took it down. I put it back up.
That you had, had pretty easy and good solution for everything other than the family court coordinator and the Veterans Affairs Director. Is that, is that right?
And those YSB positions, I, I don't know whether the between creating a new grid or making them non-exempt, between that, those two, I don't know which is the better path.
The grid seems like it makes more sense given the 24-hour nature of.
And I did ask Employee Services, which I know they're working on, um, to kind of run some reports to reflect how many hours, uh, over the 80-hour work week these positions are working to kind of give us an idea of if they were non-exempt, how many comp hours they'd be incurring.
I get the feeling Kim doesn't like the idea of another grid.
She does not.
Don't, but I do, you know, that's okay.
Yeah. And has anyone talked to YSB about any of this?
Not talked to YSB, but I have talked to the judge about this.
Okay. Um, have you talked to the department head for all of these positions?
I've talked to, um, Mr. Miller and the Commissioner's Office. I've not spoke to the PD's department yet. Um, and then I spoke to Bree. So yes, but all but one.
Okay.
Most of these positions are in the courts. Well, I, um, I don't know that we've talked to the Health Board. Uh, I forgot about the Health Department on there.
Did you speak with Ms. Kelly?
Yep. I will speak with Dr. Pritchard and the Health Board because that would be their, a decision within their purview.
Uh, yeah, but a heads up to the department heads also. I'm, I'm more looking at it like that. I mean, it's. Yeah. Um, and I agree with Counselor McKim that, to me anyway, because I was just kind of going through and marking this up. There seems to be a, a clear winner for several of these that we might be even be able to ma- make progress on this evening. So I'm gonna outline what I see for each one and without making a motion in case there's, I'm, I'm not there yet.
Well, well, because we're not, I mean, we haven't even done the salary ordinance yet for, for 2025. So we're just providing input at this point to the.
Yes, no, I, I think my goal tonight was to refresh your memory, identify the positions, and then see if you needed anything additional that would be beneficial in deciding which path to take for each position.
Well, I think we need to move on a couple of these issues if there were, if they actually do involve having WIS review something.
And they affect the budget, so.
Yes. And so, um, the one, Miller, I have an appointment set with him on the 27th to work through his job description. Uh, and I think I, I can speak to the courts about the family court coordinator. That's the only two that I think would be beneficial to go back to WIS. Um, the internal auditor just went to WIS and had changes made and it still came back as a PATB. So out of all of them, I think you're looking at two potential WIS reviews.
Okay. So you don't need a motion to move forward on any of these things?
I don't, I don't think so because at this point I'm just information gathering and was gonna circle back.
If we're gonna approve a budget, we need to have the, the 40 hours over 35 reflected in that budget. So I don't know, like, why we would wait to, I mean, we could say effective on January 1st in our new budget, but.
I'm happy to call, um, Lori and Dr. Pritchard and talk with them. I, I think they were, I mean, I can try tomorrow.
Okay. So I think though, we should say, I mean, we need to agree that that's what we want to do for those positions, right?
Let, let me ask.
At the time we pass the salary ordinance, yeah.
Yeah.
Which means tonight would be a good time to say, hey, go forth, talk with the Health Board and Lori, and let them know that what we want to do as a council is this. We suggest this in order to solve this problem. Does that make sense?
I might throw it a different way.
Okay.
Is there anyone that objects to anything that you've heard so far from sort of this way of dealing with each of these positions?
Absolutely.
Is there anyone who wants to offer any more additional input on these positions? Yes, Counselor Munson?
I, um, I noticed for, uh, YSB that, uh, each of the positions was PATC. So that doesn't look like a really complicated grid because.
No, it's just, it's just having another grid that I gotta worry about. But yeah, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
But my, my question is, am I only going to create a grid, a standalone grid for these one, two, five positions? Or do I do the entire YSB?
It has to be the entire YSB.
And that's the way I'm thinking it. So.
So on that one then.
So, but not everybody at YSB has, has these additional hours in this, these.
But are we gonna treat, but this handful of people different than we're gonna treat?
Yeah, okay.
You know, everybody else in, within that department. So.
I think creating a grid too, I mean, there's got to be a change in, in the, what you're compensating them. So yes, they're not just copying and pasting a grid over.
No, I think the grid in essence would have the FLSA minimum being the starting salary for PATC. Yeah, the person coming in with no experience, so like the first.
Create it like we do the jail?
Yeah.
Yeah. Wait, yeah. I mean, we would, I would just have to figure out something.
So in effect, we would be impacting the salaries of more positions than just this. This is where I start to get very concerned. Um, go ahead. I'm sorry. Dominate.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm, I guess I've reversed the way I was thinking about, about that. I, I think we, we need to look at what Employee Services says about the number of, of hours over. And making non-exempt is probably the, the best option. And if it only occasionally is an issue, then it's occasionally an issue.
Got Peter's hand down here.
And the next PAC meeting is October 1st. So whatever additions we need to make to that agenda, please do so, so that we can act on it expeditiously.
Well, is there anything that's waiting on PAC?
Pardon?
Or is there anything that would be waiting on?
If there's changes to like, um, for example, Mr. Miller's job description, it would come to PAC. And so that's why we've scheduled meetings before the October 1st deadline to try to see if we can get something before.
And, and depending on, um, the courts, we might, we might be able to get that one back. Because I know that I had talked to her, and I'm talking Lisa Abraham, uh, you know, about making some changes. So I don't know if she's already on that or not. So, but we might be able to get those together by October 1st.
And that's, that's kind of why I'm a little anxious about, we gotta make a decision at least for each one of these, what the next step is and give, give them some guidance. I think. It's expressing a lot of anxiety, meetings this week.
Yeah, more, more so than I think that it is needed on, on this particular issue. I mean, I think it sounds like there are really only two complicated situations that need to be resolved. And they've, they've already got some thoughts on that. Um, we're not, we're not considering the salary ordinance tonight. Um, so a lot of these changing to non-exempt would need to be included on the salary ordinance when we actually do vote on it.
And I mean, as a reminder, you can make budget change all the way up to adoption. So I'm going to work with Employee Services to try to get those reports as quickly as we can. I think it helps that if I can now narrow this list down more, which I can, because I can remove the probation officers. Um, and so I think I can bring information back more than likely by your next meeting.
And we can also make salary ordinance changes up until whatever. We're always amending. So whatever you adopt, I mean, we can still make salary ordinance changes afterwards. We just need to make sure it's in place before we start the new budget.
I've got Counselor Hawk.
Right. And I thank you for the information you sent out saying this is what would be if we, you know, did what the state is doing, 3%. And, uh, I don't know whether everybody else has looked at, did you just do that today? When did I look at that?
I did it a couple of meetings ago.
Whatever. So I don't know that we've had time to take a look at that, but I don't think we're rolling around in extra money. We don't know what to do. So I was thinking, you know, if we, if we do say the 3%, then we're not gonna be arguing back and forth with probation, uh, because we're all gonna be on the same page. Let's say if they, if they get three and we say to the employees, we're gonna give you four, then does that mean we're gonna give probation another 1%? And then, or what if probation gets three and we can only give two to the rest of the employees? You see what mess you can get into. So I mean, it would just happen to be pretty easy to say three so that we're all being treated the same. Of course, I know the treasurer would like for us to say four. I don't like.
We do have COLA next, two, two items down on this list. So I, I would encourage counselors to be thinking about that and we can maybe articulate some of that, uh, tonight. What some thoughts are.
All right. So we, we were gonna talk about that later because I thought we were just like saying, okay, we're going home.
No, 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 we're, we're still on FLSA, FLSA. I can't say it.
Do have one question on that then.
Yeah. What, what, what questions remain on that? I mean, I, I'm, I have to admit, I'm starting to get lost in the details here. Yes.
Okay. So, um, we have a public hearing on the 8th regarding budgets.
Yes.
You can still make changes, recommendations or anything. We know, I think we have a good idea of what we need to do. I don't know. Do you, do you feel that way, Molly? And so we can come back with an update. You know, that gives her time to talk to some other departments. I can see if we can get, you know, some more of the WIS stuff going and that kind of thing. So we can give you an update on, okay, this is what we absolutely have to do. And then, you know, on the 8th, if that helps.
Yes. Is there anything glaringly other than, uh, COLA on, related to this that is of question for you all from us?
I, I think other than getting some report from Employee Services that will show if these positions are made non-exempt, what the average amount of hours they would be incurring is. Is there anything else council would like to see for these positions that would help council make a decision one way or the other?
I think one thing I'm hearing people say is an approximate estimated fiscal impact of the change because the budget's down to the, the meanderings. Um, what else, counselors?
Hours of overtime that we talked, hours and overtime.
Okay.
Okay. Regarding, I guess, are, are you looking like across all of the positions, looking for that information? Or just, I mean, obviously you said we're taking out the probation ones.
Yeah, I think once we take out the probation ones, that I, I was just gonna focus on those. And like for some of them, my first step is to go talk to the Health Department and see if it could just, if they're be amendable to moving to 40 hours.
Okay.
And then I guess I could try to do a fiscal impact to show the difference between the 40 hours versus non-exempt, if that's what you want me to do.
I, I don't, I don't know that, do we need that?
Well, I, I thought I heard that a little bit from folks, that they were worried about the, the dollars. But Counselor McKim?
I mean, for health, no. I mean, for me, for health, I would like them to be 40. I think a lot of us would like them to be 40. The question is, is the Health Board gonna bulk it at making them 40?
Yeah, there's some pressure the other side on that one.
So for the family court, that would be one to review for exempt. You already did that in terms of the overtime analysis. So.
That's also one, we wanted to look at the job description because it hasn't gone to WIS in a very long time.
Okay.
So that would have, would have a dual kind of thing.
So it's not necessarily a fiscal impact for every single thing is the next step, I guess, is my point. Um, and and I think you have the analysis for like the internal auditor and some of these other ones. I guess to me, it's like, it's not as easy as a blanket. There is a, a best, best solution for each thing. This, and by solution, I get, I still mean next step. We don't, it doesn't necessarily, necessarily know. But I don't really want to be voting on a budget when I don't know what we're paying. I mean, I guess we can just put 58,656 in it for everybody. But it would be good to have a more.
Then that means it is a fiscal impact question.
No, I mean, make a decision and get it into the budgets of our departments for next year so that what we're approving is already in there. It just makes sense as we're thinking about all these other things.
Well, let me ask it a different way. Is the, okay, how much, how much possible variance in the budget for any of the, the budgets that, for want of a better word, I'll say matter? Because, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Um, what, what is the variance and will that tonight affect your consideration of a raise? Like, would you, would the, if the 40 hours of, or the additional 10 hours of Health Department cause you to give employees a different COLA? Uh, to me, it's a very small, I mean, we're talking about very small amounts of money. The, you know, probably the biggest, the biggest deals are the, the Veteran Services and the Family Courts Coordinator because those are in general fund. And there's the most mystery associated with them.
See your point. Um, and it's not gonna change my discussion points tonight. Are we deciding a COLA tonight?
I think that us talking about a COLA, having a, a little bit of a discussion around what maybe inclinations are, would help our staff who have been lobbying me since February on this question.
We'll start again.
They will. And I've already warned others who makes it in this seat to get ready in about two minutes. Uh, but yeah, I, I think they want to hear that. And I think that on their side, that's the work product that is the hardest to navigate. Because it's gotten so much different than, you know, back in the day where it was, I guess it was a ledger. This is now multiple systems, multiple hours, and then we end up always having some mistake at the last second. And of course, that's just no fault of anyone's own. And then, of course, the state says if you are 12 seconds over, you will have the tax rate of Owen County. And, and, uh, we, we got our boys out. Not to all them out.
Are you still on FLSA or have we moved on to COLA? What are we talking about?
Run FLSA.
Are we still on?
I'm sorry.
On L, FLSA.
What I was gonna say about FLSA was when we were going through some of the training on that, they had made it clear that, that even though it suggested like three years from now, they may have another bump up, that, that could be changed. They changed it last time they tried to do this. So we have to not be making changes because of what's gonna happen three years from now. You know, we may all be blowing to bits three years from now. But the other thing having to do with getting things ready for staff is we've got all these different positions and different changes that came from WIS and whatever. And we need to take that in consideration too. Just I say that before I go home.
Anything else, else on FLSA? So it sounds like we've got follow-up items and other considerations to do. Item 12 on our agenda is final budget discussions. And this is an opportunity for us to bring back any budget that counselors want to look at, see, vet, discuss, um, et cetera. Is there any budget that counselors would like to reopen? Yeah, Counselor Hawk.
Get this looked up, but.
I can't hear you. Sorry.
Bring it along.
Trying to get out of here. Okay. When I was looking at, when it was being discussed early on in the Commissioner's budget, there was the health net in there. And I'm trying to remember, but what I'm, I believe that that health net, health net is covered by federal government, state government or whatever. And really local dollars, it's not necessary for them to have. Now, am I remembering that right? Because it's not like, it's not like local budgeting.
Say that one more time slow.
Like we got, no, I mean, I think.
How much was that? But well.
250. Um, it's 250. We temporarily lowered it to 150 last year because we didn't really know what they were doing.
Well, I thought it was that, that their revenue is coming from a totally different place than what, what was it called before?
Oh, volunteers in medicine.
And so their revenue was coming from a major source, not a local source. But I may be wrong on that.
What Medicaid reimbursements, right? Isn't that pretty early with their?
Yeah. So.
Well, it's, it's part of a bigger entity. I don't know. There might be other things that that parent company does. I mean, yeah, I don't know.
They can bill private.
And I don't, I don't know. And I didn't even remember how much it was. I just, I was gonna put that out there for trying to find a little bit of a raise for people. If that was 250, 250,000 would that help? But I don't have any strong feeling one way or the other. I just thought if they don't, if some group doesn't need our money, then I bet we can find, find people who do need it.
So what, one item we had, Kim, you had something in general, or pardon me, in, in the general fund for emergency. You wanted to bring up.
Yes, during, during the discussion with emergency management, um, and I can't remember. I'm gonna pull that budget up real quick and share it with you. When, uh, when Jamie was in here, she talked about how this line right here is called, um, emergency management heavy equipment services. And that she would like to see a different line, um, so that it's not, uh, so narrow with regards to, it can only be used for, you know, heavy equipment services. So I had, I did an email exchange with Counselor Iverson and with, with Jamie. And we have come up with a solution to add an account line. And dang it, I didn't put that on here. Um, can you look up, go to allow, sorry. But if we add the account line and it is just called, um, emergency. But if we add the account line and it is just called emergency management, I think it's disaster recovery or response or something to that effect. And then you would need to reduce line 35051 and 35052 and put that combination into this new account line.
It's disaster, EM disaster response.
Well, what, what difference does that, does that make any difference in the budget?
That's what we had talked about at, you know, during the meeting that she wanted to create just one line to have everything in.
But I mean, that doesn't change the bottom line.
Yeah, it's not going to change the bottom line. So I just needed to let you know I was going to move forward with that if that was okay with you guys.
Yeah. Cheryl, did you have something you want to?
So I had talked to her, but I, nobody contacted me about this.
Well, during the meeting, Counselor Iverson said that she, that he would reach out and work with me and Jamie about that.
I'm sorry, Cheryl.
Okay, that's okay. I just had talked to her and didn't understand what was going on. And I do have a point to make. And that is if you use the term disaster, then you better be dealing with disasters. And I'm not sure you want it to be something as technical as a disaster in the naming of what the funds are to go for.
That's an interesting point.
And I think that's a really valid point. And, and I think to Mr. McKim's point, we can name these lines whenever we want.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have very much substantive impact on whether or not we're going to pass a decent budget or not. But I, I, I take your point very, it's a good point.
Yes, Counselor McKim.
Can we move on to a discussion of COLA and nitpick later?
Okay.
I mean, it's, I don't, I just.
Let's open up and talk about COLA. Can we pull that up and take a look?
Okay, so yeah, this is the report that I sent everyone. This does include all of the changes that we've done with regards to adding personnel or removing personnel. So this does reflect all of those changes throughout all of the budgets. And the bottom line is.
Even tonight? Not tonight, though.
Pardon? Does not include tonight's changes.
Okay.
But if anything.
He's not a magician.
Yeah, I'm not that quick. So, but. Also, with regards to COLA, um, we've had departments with regards to salary grids have asked about adding additional step increases of 35, 40 and 45. And we just recently added the 20 and 25 with, you know, within the last couple of years. But, so I don't know if that's something you guys want to look at as to how that would look on a grid and the costs.
I, I don't want to.
I, I think the discussion's on COLA.
Okay.
I think other things are not that question. And I, I kind of, I would love to hear counselors maybe talk about COLA, thoughts about COLA, to try to get that articulated.
So it was like.
Sure. No doubt. And I know I've been asked that too. There's a, there's a lot of things kind of not applying generally to everybody that have been asked for, for certain things that I, I'm not sure that we will quite get to this year.
So, um, so this is the charts. Um, and as you can see, the difference at the bottom, it says the COLA proposals estimated increase. So the, the difference is from what you're looking at. So column I, the pink, is the difference between what the request and what the three percent will cost a million point three.
Can you go back up to the general, general fund? I think general fund and PS Lit are probably the two that are most salient to the decision.
Here's the general fund. This is how much a three percent cost to the general fund.
And it says nine thou, nine hundred thousand?
Nine hundred twenty-two thousand.
Got.
Percent.
And.
Counselor McKim.
I, I'm just, you know, I always like to just throw out what I think we should do here. I, I like to, 3.2%. I think we, we have used in the past, you know, we've tried to use as a bogey that, uh, the, the Midwest CPI, December to December. Last year, we, you know, it was a very special case and I think we did exactly what we needed to. But I think it's a good idea if we get back onto that 3.2%. The difference isn't that much between three and 3.2%. 3.2 is either three or 3.2 are fair. The city's giving three, the state is giving three. The federal government's giving two. So I'm, I'm going to get less than y'all. But, um, the, uh, but I think 3.2 gets us back on track with the, the CPI measure we've used in the past.
Um, and then here, let's go down to, there's a public safety lit.
Public safety lit is actually the fund that I'm, I'm not, I wouldn't say concerned about in the sense that there's plenty of cash balance now for the budget we're passing. But next year's council may want to rebalance a little. And of course, then we may have a jail fund. It may, that may help with rebalancing that too. So there's, there are other options. But the general fund, we're pretty darn close to balanced without the COLA.
So. Other funds you would like to look at?
Pretty well about the COLA.
Well, we were like 200 under and we've cut over 100,000 today.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, that's what I was going to show you, um.
4B.
Let's see.
Are you going to show us where we?
Yeah, let me.
Like a million too short. Now all of a sudden we're not.
It's been sliding down.
I guess my question would be then, pretty well balanced still would mean then we're a million two meet, yeah, in deficit if we budget for COLA.
Yeah, on paper, but we always know we, we budget like that. And we wind up with several more, more million dollars in cash than we had before.
In reversions.
So, um, Courtney and I went through, um, and this is the re, re total reduction. This is the total reduction amount that we've made over the six meetings with regards to, uh, general fund.
How did it get?
And then you increased the levy by rebalancing the election fund.
Right. And so then.
So.
That's in here.
Up and down. Yeah.
Let me do.
So, um, we changed. Right here. There we go.
I see it now.
So, um, the new general fund amount as of tonight. Where did I write that down? Right here? Fifty-two. Okay, so here is the new general fund amount with the changes that we've made tonight. So that's where we're at now on the Form 4B draft.
I brought that line down even further.
And let me remember, remind everybody that that law, that, that, that fund balance also includes $100,000 that we put in emergency management, just in case, that we were just talking about. And $300,000 that we put in for juvenile detention, just in case. So I mean, there's a lot of, I guess, a lot of squish in, in that budget, at least in a couple of hundred thousand dollars.
It always sounds much safer when you say it that way than it is.
But I mean, that, that, the squish is important because that means that we can handle a, a decent number of COLA, a cost of living increase for staff. Now, the question I think before us is what level?
And then go back down to the, the bottom then. You know, so, I mean, yeah, that, that's the, that's the good question then. What is that operating balance become for each? If, if that amount of COLA is added in, what is the operating balance for each of those, um, funds? And does it put any of them anywhere near what we would consider to be of concern?
See the auditor's hand over there.
Just wanted to know, I'm not sure if it was mentioned, but we have a, another just in case in the assessors contractual line in the general fund.
A hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Thank you very much. So I, let me offer this to counselors. Here's what I have heard. If I were the staff trying to prepare this for us, I've heard a Counselor McKim has offered 3.2. That is an amount I've heard. I've not heard other counselors yell about that or counter that. But is that, is that an amount that you would want the staff to move forward in preparing?
There's a, there's a good basis for it. There's.
Good basis.
Predictable.
I am concerned that even what we just talked about, a 5.2 increase would be quite a bit. I, I'm, I'm very happy with that 3.2.
Wait, oh, you thought I was going the other way? No. I'm going rogue this week, folks.
Order more pizza. We're going to be in here a few more hours. I, I, I will offer this. I will say, and I, I say this again, everybody's tired of hearing this. As the son of retired county employee, I know how much these conversations do matter. And I would love to go as high as possible. However, we know that we have a, a good guiding metric with the CPI. We have done a lot in the recent years to keep up. I mean, to fill vacancies and to train and to keep up and, and beyond. And I'm pleased that we do that because I think there was a time that wasn't readily the first answer. And, and I'm not blaming anyone for it. I just had heard that firsthand. So I, I, to me, the 3.2 sounds like a achievable, doable on comparison with other entities. And of course, every year's a new year to keep looking to the future, but it, it gets us where we need to go. I think it does. Are there any other comments on that, counselors? Do, do, yes.
I was just going to say like, no, I, I.
It's picking you up.
Face. Yeah.
It's not, aren't it?
It's not picking you up.
Think that's the universe way of telling me to shut up. Go home. Glad I'm extending my part time because the city ain't getting more money. Um, okay, so.
That's on record.
Yeah, so, uh, the 3.2 I think is a really good, um, starting point. I think it's a base, good base point. I think we did a lot last year. I think the previous year was the, um, the bonuses that we did. Also, I remind council, it is the conversation of the benefits that got started in budget hearing just a year ago. We can champion that. Um, so I, I think that we're on the up and up. And I do think that we are competitive with our salary in comparison to, um, what the city is offering. And I've heard them actually say that in their meetings. So, yeah, I, I think personally, it would make me more comfortable if we just stick with the 3.2 for now.
Go.
Counselors.
Agree.
Final salary grid of the budget. Or at least as close as we're going to get at this point. And Counselor?
Yeah, just, just as, you know, we always want to, uh, kind of remind everybody that thi- this is just preliminary and that there is, you know, there's more information that could come and more deliberations that, that, that could occur. And so, you know, don't, don't, nobody should be spending the extra money.
Don't spend it.
Yeah.
Here, I'm not sure which one of these is going. This early now on September 19th versus some of those previous years when we were in here with Christmas trees. Let's staff proof this thing to make sure there's something that we haven't forgotten. Like, well, we're not paying anything for HVAC at the just, this lets us do that and have time for it. And that's why we're doing this early, along with everything else we're doing this month.
Yeah, and I will send something out to the departments and work with them on trying to get numbers updated so we can at least get you a good, uh, total, you know, on, on what that's going to look like. So.
Counselor Hock.
Right. I, I just, uh, know there's been a lot of things that's apparently going to be going to WIS and I wish you all well, but I I can't right now think about, um, how much of that should have just one had come straight here. If WIS has already approved some of those positions, so we could have included those in those budgets. Because, you know, you're going to take it to PAC and PAC's going to say, just send it on to the council, whatever WIS said. And we could have already had that included in the budgets and.
I didn't get those back till this week, so.
Well, I'm, I know. I'm just saying we.
Yeah.
Yep, we're learning every.
We can consider it at the, at the hearing.
Yeah, I can, yeah. I mean, we're going to have a, um, a PAC meeting on the first. I can, we can have everything ready on, on the eighth at the public hearing.
And we can always, we can always, and I'll throw this out. One time we did a work session, had long-term finance and full council and nobody died. PAC is all here right now and council's all here right now. We can always do about anything. And not let the process kill us.
Yep. Some of those WIS, uh, recommendations were for no change, right? They didn't all have.
Yeah.
It seemed like several.
No change. And then there was some that there was change. And I just thought when we were all here together, just to have a meeting, have a meeting, to have a meeting, we could just boom and be done. Because there's other things people had to do on the first.
Are there anything else that you all need from us at this point? All right. Counselors, any comments that you have at this point? All right. I think we've said enough.
Good job, Mr. President.
Well, well, thank you, Mr. President. But no, you're, uh, thank you. We're going to go ahead and adjourn these hearings and we'll come back together for, uh, the budget hearings and adoption. Thank you.
We will be back.
Thank you.